All right. Good afternoon, everybody. This is the Wednesday, November 17th, 2021 afternoon session of the Portland City Council. Good afternoon. Kealan, please call the roll.
Good afternoon. Maps.
Here.
Rubio.
Here.
Ryan.
Here.
Hardisty.
What happened? Are you guys there?
I see Commissioner.
My apologies. My, um, for some reason, my mouse is sticking today. Here.
Wheeler.
Here. Under Portland city code and state law, the city council is holding this meeting electronically. All members of the council are attending remotely by video and teleconference. And the city has made several avenues available to the public to listen to the audio broadcast of this meeting. This meeting is available to the public on the city's YouTube channel, EGUPDX, www portlandoregon.gov/video and Channel 30. The public may also provide written testimony to the council by emailing the council clerk at cctestimony@portlandoregon.gov. The council is taking these steps as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and the need to limit in-person contact and to promote physical distancing. The pandemic is an emergency that threatens the public health, safety, and welfare, which requires us to meet remotely by electronic communications. I want to thank you all for your patience, your flexibility, and your understanding as we continue to manage through this difficult situation to conduct the city's business. We'll now hear from legal counsel on the rules of order and decorum. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. To participate in council meetings, you may sign up in advance with the council clerk's office for communications to briefly speak about any subject. You may also sign up for public testimony on resolutions, reports, or the first readings of ordinances. The published council agenda at www portland.gov/council/agenda contains information about how and when you may sign up for testimony while the city council is holding electronic meetings. Your testimony should address the matter being considered at the time when testifying. Please state your name for the record. Your address is not necessary. Please disclose if you are a lobbyist. If you are representing an organization, please identify. The presiding officer determines the length of testimony. Individuals generally have three minutes to testify unless otherwise stated. When your time is up, the presiding officer will ask you to conclude. Disruptive conduct such as shouting, refusing to complete your testimony when your time is up, or interrupting others' testimony or council deliberations will not be allowed. If there are disruptions, a warning will be given that further disruption may result in the person being placed on hold or ejected from the remainder of the electronic meeting. Please be aware that all council meetings are recorded.
Great. Thank you very much. Our first item today, the fall bump, item number eight two five, please, the second reading.
Adopt the FY 2021-22 Fall Supplemental Budget and make other budget-related changes.
Colleagues, this is the second reading. We have heard extensive presentations on the fall bump package. We have taken extensive public testimony, but this is the time for any council discussion prior to taking a vote on the fall bump. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Maps.
One moment, please. Mr. Mayor, colleagues. We have been brought together today by some very good news. Our business license tax revenues came in much higher than predicted, which is a clear sign that Portland's economy is on the road to recovery. Now, it's our task this afternoon to decide how to invest those dollars. I'd like to take a moment to share with you the lens through which I evaluated budget proposals. I'm focused on supporting investments which help our city achieve four goals. First, I want to reduce homicides by 20% by the end of 2022. Second, a year from now, I want to see a reduction in the absolute number of people living on Portland sidewalks. Third, by July 1, I want Portland to have cleaned up the trash and graffiti that have accumulated during the COVID era. And fourth, I think this city should provide direct aid to Portlanders who are still struggling to recover from the economic effects of the COVID recession. While the budget before us today is not perfect, it does move us closer to achieving these goals. For example, this budget makes important investments towards both rightsizing and reforming our public safety system. We all know that Portland is in a public safety crisis. So far this year, Portland has seen 75 homicides, which makes 2021 the deadliest year in our city's 170-year history. And it's not just homicides. Car and catalytic converter thefts have increased exponentially, and calls to 911 have increased by 20% in the last year. That's why I support the mayor's plan to add 200 officers and 100 unarmed officers to the Portland Police Bureau. But even as we right-size the police bureau, we must not lose track of public safety reform. That's why I support funding in this budget for body cams for every police officer. And that's why I support this budget's proposal to expand Portland Street Response. I would also point out that this budget makes important progress on homelessness issues. Again, my goal here is to see fewer people sleeping on the streets a year from now. Thanks to Commissioner Ryan's leadership, this budget moves us closer to that goal. In particular, I'm glad to see the city and county spent an additional $6.5 million on cleaning up unsanctioned camps and $1.3 million on outreach and direct engagement with unsanctioned camps and an additional $500,000 cleaning up trash on the side of the highways. Finally, um, one of my goals for this budget is to provide direct aid to Portlanders who are still struggling to recover from the COVID recession. That's why I'm glad to see this budget invest $500,000 in direct relief to Portlanders who are struggling to pay their utility bills. Colleagues, I suspect each and every one of us wishes this budget could be a little bit different. It's not perfect, but it does represent some progress on some important goals. Specifically, the investments we make today will make Portland safer. The investments we make today will help house the homeless. The investments we make today will help clean up the trash and graffiti that have accumulated on Portland streets during the COVID era. And the investments we make today will provide direct aid to Portlanders who are struggling to pay their bills. For those reasons and more, I vote aye on the proposed budget.
Rubio.
Twenty months ago, COVID set off a series of hard choices that each of us had to take to make varying degrees in our individual, family, and work lives. And as most of us have retreated to our homes, many did not have the privilege of that choice. And hard choices and hard realities have played out and are continuing to play out across the city. And so we'll likely see the impacts for some time, but I'm glad that we're taking some first steps on some investments today. I want to be clear to you that Portland was already facing a housing crisis and other disparities for our vulnerable communities well before this pandemic hit. And what COVID did was just to exacerbate the multiple racial and economic disparities and crises beyond what anyone could ever have imagined. This was our worst-case scenario. So fast forward to about six weeks ago, when our budget reconciliation process was revealed that we had these additional resources. And here we are with an opportunity before us to respond to a greater degree to multiple crises and needs. And I'm voting in support of these investments because we are responding to these needs by taking action today to do more. So for me, a yes vote means more coordination with Monloma County and the Joint Office on Multiple Investments for our houseless neighbors, more housing and social service navigators working with their houseless neighbors, more resources for behavioral health and service provider workers who have been staffing this critical work. I appreciate the work of Mayor and Commissioner Ryan and their staff members and city staff and county leaders who came together to leverage and coordinate many of these investments. I also want to thank all the community groups and neighborhood groups and nonprofits and advocacy groups that have self-organized to help our vulnerable. We see you and we thank you for stepping up in some amazing ways. And on that same note, my office and I recognize that we can do and be better in bringing the most impacted community members better into these processes. Any bump process is speedy, and I'm committed to finding more ways to include those that cannot participate under traditional advocacy circumstances. The vote also means to me that we'll have more money to move us into alignment with the DOJ settlement demands. And it will also fund a much-needed police bureau staffing study by Director Myers. And it also sets the stage to build out our PS3 officer program, those community safety personnel who are unarmed, who can help to respond to non-emergency, low-acuity calls. This program still has much development to go under, but it's one of the pillars towards seeing change within the bureau. And this vote also means we'll be releasing funds to finally expand Portland Street Response, something that we've all been waiting for. And I want to commend Commissioner Hardisty for her steadfast leadership on this issue. And finally, it also means more investment in Parks in East County and other service area and PBOAT infrastructure and starts beginning investments in the critical climate work our community has long been calling for. So all of these investments move us towards a more accountable and responsible safety system that doesn't rely on centrally armed officers, but this budget doesn't solve everything. We need to focus on systemic inequities and problems, and there is so much more work to be done. But my goal and every vote I cast will be through this land of community-centered work that better reflects and serves our values and the Portland that we are today. And despite the pictures some may paint of where our city is, the truth is, while we have much work to do, we are also a resilient and thriving community that will overcome and evolve. And this council has committed to do that, and we will not push this responsibility aside. So again, I just want to appreciate all the work of the budget office, the mayor's staff, my council colleagues and their staffs, my own team, and the hundreds of community members who have called, emailed, met with us, and also testified. Your voices and ideas helped to shape this budget. Thank you all for caring so much about our city. So I stand with my colleagues today and all who love the city of Portland and are invested in this future in voting aye.
Ryan.
Thank you, Kealan. I want to start by acknowledging where Portland is as a city right now. To put it simply, we're hurting. Every single day, I hear stories that paint a picture of our collective struggle. I visited a small business owner who in the past nine weeks has had to close their doors multiple times because their stores have been burglarized, because four people were injured on their property as a result of gun violence, and because two employees quit as they no longer felt safe at work. And due to staffing shortages, the police were unable to help. I've also heard from mothers who are directly impacted by the cycles of community gun violence, want to see more community-based organizations respond. Recently, I went on a ride along with a community-based organization that does gun violence reduction work. Experience was deeply impactful, eye-opening, and it was incredibly inspiring to see this crucial work take place firsthand. And when it comes to Portland's number one issue, houselessness, all anyone needs to do is walk or drive down the street to get a vivid picture of what we face. The collective challenge before us is unlike anything Portland has experienced before. Not only has the houses' population reached an all-time high, but our streets are being flooded with a new form of methamphetamine that is incredibly cheap, highly addictive, and highly dangerous. Thankfully, both the city and the county identified large windfalls in our budgets to give us an unexpected opportunity to make a significant impact on the pressing crises we face. Amid all of this turmoil, in every conversation I have, one key message resound is resoundly at the forefront: Act with urgency. I was sworn in just over a year ago. If there is one thing that I have focused on, it's been to break down silos and increase collaboration within the city and between the city and our jurisdictional partners. The spirit of collaboration, coupled with the urgency demanded by the dire situation our city is in, has led us to the investments we are voting on today. Urgency and collaboration are the central pillars of the houseless interventions funded in this package. When Cherokee Forey reached out to the city and suggested we pool our resources, we wasted no time. After two straight weeks of daily engagement, we developed a joint $38 million package that will have an immediate impact on our streets. One of the keys to our initiatives of success is mutual role clarity. Using the city's infrastructure and first responder networks and the county's social services and our combined funds, we can and will align and leverage our efforts in an unprecedented way. These funds will build on our navigation team framework to add more outreach workers who will focus on high-need unsanctioned encampments and build relationships with those on the ground. And we will also deploy the recruitment and retention tools necessary to make these difficult jobs an attractive career path for talented people, which I know is the pillar of any organization's success. We will give the Impact Reduction Program the resources it needs to build on its services and clean up our streets, including the areas around the soon-to-be safe trust villages. We will also provide additional storage and hygiene solutions for hundreds of unsanctioned camps. You all know how much I believe in alignment, and the Street Services Coordination Center will create the alignment we need to do this work efficiently. And we will dramatically increase the number of shelter beds citywide. Furthermore, as we begin to roll out Portland Street Response citywide, we will add another layer to the needed interventions within our region. And through our new Street Services Coordination Center, we will ensure Portlanders in crisis can more easily engage with the services they need. I want to address Portlanders who believe we should have focused more of our resources on housing. First, I completely agree that housing is the primary solution to houselessness. At the same time, we are in the middle of a global pandemic, which means that we are still working with significantly reduced indoor congregant shelter capacity. We are now entering the coldest, rainiest months of the year, and there are thousands living unsheltered on our streets. To balance these two sets of facts, the city and the county have found a middle ground by focusing 18 million of the 38 million in capital investments that led 400 shelter beds to our system now and that can and will eventually be converted into housing. In concert with the $250 million Portland Housing Bond and the $2.5 billion supportive housing services measure, I am confident that we are taking concrete steps to solve this crisis the right way. This is not an either-or situation. We most focus on building long-term infrastructure while we address the immediate needs of Portlanders who are suffering. Part of that means ensuring Portlanders struggling to pay their rent receive the services they need. And when it comes to rent assistance, what we are doing is working. Since the statewide eviction moratorium lifted in July locally in Monoma County with a 90-day Safe Harbor ordinance, we have seen about half the number of monthly court eviction filings for non-payment of rent compared to those numbers recorded pre-pandemic. As we look to the months ahead, we will continue working to prevent evictions or providing rapid rent assistance for households who receive an eviction notice for non-payment by funding door-to-door outreach teams, sending intervention teams to the courthouse, and providing legal assistance through the county and the Housing Bureau's eviction legal defense program in partnership with Oregon Law Center. Right now, 1 million in rent assistance is being distributed every week through the partnership between the city and the county and collaboration with 40 different community-based organizations. Since July 1, we provided 70% of the 24 million in rent assistance to renters at the risk of displacement, and we are on track to have the rest of those funds out the door on time. These funds will be followed by an additional 30 million of rent assistance, which is included in the Housing Bureau's Fall Bump Package. The other significant component of this funding package that I want to speak to has to do with public safety. Ensuring safety for all Portlanders is a shared responsibility across the city council. We all recognize the growing need for collaboration across our bureaus to ensure the city has adequate staffing for public safety officers and properly address violence and crime. This is precisely the reason why it's so important in this Fall Bump Package provides increased staffing for the Portland Police Bureau and the expansion of Portland Street Response across the city. There are some things this path pitch does not do. I have met with advocacy groups representing East Portland, the Soul District, Central City, and more, all of whom are calling for funds to spur economic growth and recovery. I want you to know that I hear you. I see you. This council has agreed that along with houselessness and community safety, with houselessness and community safety. Sorry, I went blank. Economic recovery is one of the top three priorities. However, the reality is, in order to support economic recovery, investments in houselessness and community safety are essential. Our houseless interventions and our investments in community safety will pave the way for Portland's economic recovery. I believe we must use a second tranche of our dollars to respond to the needs of small businesses throughout Portland, and I will advocate for that allocation. I'd like to end my remarks today by calling certain groups to action. First, I want to call on the state to act on behavioral health work. The behavioral health crisis we face today is the product of decades of disinvestment and failure of our state. Earlier this year, the legislature moved hundreds of millions of dollars out of the door to dramatically expand inpatient clinical behavioral health infrastructure around the state. Now, we must, they must absolutely focus on workforce issues as the two are completely linked. Right now, local service providers can only use a fraction of the inpatient behavioral health beds they have available because they don't have the staff they need. The state could spend all the money they want on more facilities, but if we don't have the personnel, the point has moved. The city and the county are stepping up and working hand-in-hand to make a step in the right direction by providing concrete recruitment and retention incentives. The state legislature and the governor must follow our lead and invest in solutions in this workforce crisis. If we don't invest in solutions, we will not be able to address extreme levels of severe psychosis caused by the new methamphetamines on our street, not to mention the scores of other behavioral health issues. And I am concerned that the state's massive investment will lead to yet another failure. I also call on Portlanders to welcome safe trust villages into their communities. Now that we are allocating these funds, which includes resources to ensure the areas immediately surrounding safe trust villages are clean and safe for villagers and also the house residents alike, we must move forward and begin the process of acceptance. Acceptance of the fact we are all in this crisis as a unified community and that we all must work together to do our part so we can pave a path forward. My fellow Portlanders, I know that compassion fatigue is real. When we all experience so much hardship every day, fatigue is natural. I know you, I know you are calling on us to act. I ask that you accept this Fall Bump Package as the concrete, urgent action that you've called for. Your city council is here, and we're doing what we can. Please lean in with us. Help us reestablish the connection between the head and the heart. And then together, let's remember what the soul of the city is all about: Love. I vote aye.
Hardisty.
First, I want to thank the employees of the city of Portland. March 2020 changed life as we knew it forever. What I know is that city of Portland employees suffered all the crises that everyone else suffered, but they also showed up. They worked hard. They were intentional about making sure that we found the most vulnerable people in our community to provide supports to. I'd never been prouder in my life to be part of an effort. Ironically, getting ready for the vote today, and it took me until late last night to figure out where I would land. I decided to walk over to the food carts because I'm fortunate to have sidewalks in my neighborhood, and I'm fortunate to have good food carts close to me. But I came back in the house twice because each time the coat that I had on wasn't heavy enough for the wind that I was going to encounter when I took that walk. And it is real to me that in March of 2020, there were many hard-working Oregonians who woke up. woke up, lost their two or three minimum wage jobs, faced housing insecurity. Their kids were already behind in school, now they're two more years behind. And what I realize is, just like I realized then, I was so proud to partner with Mayor Wheeler. He and I, along with Prosper Portland, made some really great decisions. We prioritized Black Indigenous and other people of color business owners because we knew they were hit first, hottest, and would be the slowest to recover. When I was taking that walk to get my food, I reflected that what people are seeing as trash and disarray were people who had plans for their children, who are people who are working two, three jobs because guess what? It just costs too damn much money to live in a city of Portland. And so when I decided that I would support this budget, the primary reason I'm going to vote yes is because this is one-time money that we're voting on. Nothing we're voting on today funds two-hundred officer positions. In fact, we have a hundred and thirty funded, I'm sorry, a hundred funded, thirty unfunded to date in Portland Police Bureau's budget. Collectively, we all agreed to thirty more in the June budget process. So again, a hundred and thirty funded positions, thirty unfunded ones today. If we started hiring police officers today, it would be three years before the first one hit the street. It is dishonest for us to say we are voting for two-hundred police officers. We are not. It is dishonest. It is also dishonest to say that we're putting money in the hands of the most vulnerable people. What we're doing is paying our own bills with that money that's being allocated for utilities. I do have a written statement, but there's one more thing I wanted to say before I get to my written statement, is that there is no such thing as a sanctioned or unsanctioned camp. There are government-funded camps that provide resources and cleanup and support, and there is non-government-funded camps. The courts ruled that when you don't have enough places for people to live, you cannot just push people as if they're trash. Language has power. And if our elected leaders are out talking about sanction and unsanction, no wonder the community is actually equating that term as well. Until we have housing in the City of Portland that people can afford to live in, we will have people on our streets. The question is, who will we be? I, I, I calmed myself for this conversation because I also can count to three. But what I've heard so far, I do not want to mislead the public. Nothing we do today will change conditions on the street overnight. We've already allocated over a hundred million dollars that has not yet hit the street. So taglines and, you know, uh, uh, soundbites, those are fine and dandy. What we're talking about is suffering on our streets, and people who are housed are suffering, and people who are unhoused are suffering. We get to decide the kind of Portland that reemerges from this pandemic. Before, we had two Portlanders, one who was focused on making money. Today, we have a population of people who are economically devastated. We have sixty-two million more dollars because guess what? Some corporations made bucket loads of money during the pandemic, and we know corporations don't like to pay taxes. So if we got that much money that we didn't expect, can you imagine how much profit was made? That is what we're talking about. We have one-time money to invest in our values. Today, I am going to make the difficult decision about yes on this budget. It has a lot in it that I like, and it has a lot in it that I'm concerned about. I want to make it really clear to voters where I stand on this budget and I'm, and what I support because I've never done anything else, but be honest and transparent about that. I'm going to recognize that Portland is dealing with a lot of challenges as we recover from an ongoing pandemic. Economic fallout, heat waves, a racial justice uprising, a dramatic increase in traffic fatalities, in fact, on part of the deadliest year by automobiles in the City of Portland, and a national surge in gun violence. I share the concerns I hear each and every day from our community. I get it. People want to feel safe. They want a compassionate response to a houseless crisis, and they want to see an expansion of community safety programs like Portland Street Response. This year's Fall Bump is unique in that we have unexpected revenue available for one-time funding, meaning these funds are unlikely to exist next year and therefore are likely to be available to fund and therefore unlikely to be available to fund ongoing budget or staffing commitments. This revenue has largely come from taxes on our largest corporations and biggest businesses who saw a significant increase in profits while small businesses and regular Portlanders continue to suffer. There's urgency to respond to these crises that must be balanced with thoughtful data-driven proposals and sound financial management. We should be ensuring that these investments will produce outcomes that improve safety and provide relief to Portlanders in need. My primary concern during this Fall Bump has been the lack of process, transparency, public engagement, and measurable outcomes around some of the spending proposals in this budget. This was another budget that involved a lot of behind closed door deal-making with people who are already connected to power and elected officials. And that's your concern, all of us who serve on this council. To all those who continue to write and testify to council, who continue to advocate and speak for justice and transformation, we have made some progress, and it's only because of you. I hear you, and I'm still with you. There are elements of this budget I do not support, and I will continue to advocate for us redirecting those dollars. To those frustrated at the lack of progress as we recover from an ongoing pandemic, who are not feeling safe in Portland right now, I hear you as well. And I'm committed to creating a system of community safety that serves everyone equitably, effectively, and fairly. I do not believe that jamming two-minute testimony from hundreds of Portlanders into a single Wednesday evening is sufficient public engagement for an allocation of sixty-four million dollars in unanticipated revenue. Portlanders, of all opinions, have shown they are desperate for meaningful engagement in our conversations about the future of community safety. Unfortunately, we have failed to create a genuine and equitable community engagement process around our stated goal of rethinking policing and community safety since the murder of George Floyd. This is continuing to divide our community and threatens to lead us back to a status quo that leaves out Black, Indigenous, Latinx, and all communities of color once again. I'm also concerned that some aspects of this budget are attempting to commit this council to financial irresponsibility, long-term policy decisions that defy budget protocol and procedures. I've been lectured in the past by some of my same colleagues here today that there are, uh, around last fall's bump, that we don't make policy decisions during this process. But there are several policy commitments being made today that have long-term implications and create new service level expectations that have not been discussed by the people elected to serve the City of Portland. I'm disturbed by this lack of transparency and attempts to commit to new policies and practices during a rush to allocate millions of dollars that have barely been discussed as a council. I am further concerned that millions of dollars in this Fall Bump are funding items that also receive millions of dollars in combined federal and adopted budget funds that have yet to be put to work and have yet gone out the door. I believe we could have put this funding for duplicative investments aside for future allocations so that we really could have had a robust community engagement process as well as to see what are the outcomes of the one-hundred-million dollars that we've already approved to go out the door. When I tried to advocate for more rental assistance in our first round of off-funding, I was told over and over, there's too much money funding, it's too much money in the system already to get it out efficiently, and that adding more would not be helpful. Even though the data showed us that we were not fully funding the real need that's on the street, yet today, I see others doing the exact same thing in this Fall Bump with several proposals. Over and over, I'm told, I cannot do something only to have my colleagues decide that in fact, yes, they can, behind closed doors. I also want to be clear that when I criticize the process and transparency around our budget, those are criticisms of elected leadership overseeing this process, not the incredible hard-working employees who make up our budget office and our fearless budget director Jessica Canard. Jessica Canard always gives us good advice, and for two budget cycles in a row, we totally disregarded it. There's a reason I have a five-billion-dollar maintenance backlog because elected leaders always want to do the new shiny thing rather than actually taking care of what we have. I'm concerned about the one-point-three-five-million dollars this budget invests into Prosper Portland to fund four different future-focused studies and strategies to inform future work that we do not know, A, if we want, and B, if we will be able to fund it. At this time, OMF and Prosper are providing, or actually OMF and the, uh, uh, and the budget office are working on what is Prosper's plan, given that thirteen tax incremental finance districts are nearing completion, which will result in the increased resources returning to the assessment roles and to the city's general fund. Their reinvestment in Prosper is not a foregone conclusion, and anyone who's been here in the three years I've been here, I've asked this question over and over and over again. Prosper has not prospered by pop communities or most small businesses in the City of Portland. The council must have that conversation. One-point-three-million dollars for them to figure out how they do the future is not a good investment of one-time dollars. This year, two community members experiencing mental health crises were killed by Portland Police Bureau. That's why we are expanding mental health resources that are unarmed. For this council to vote to increase the number of behavioral health unit officers at a time where we're investing in non-law enforcement responses to, uh, to people suffering mental health issues on our street is moving us backwards, not forward, especially when the community oversight community liaison tells us that they're concerned with the rise in use of force by behavioral health unit officers. When they tell us that the more officers that show up, the more use of force goes up, this is a bad time to be adding people with weapons to first responders who are suffering, uh, to responding to people suffering from mental health issues. I agree with Commissioner Rubio that our focus of the council right now should be filling the positions that we have open, one-hundred vacancies that are already paid for. Long-term, we must change the culture of Portland Police Bureau to attract the kind of police officers that will be proud to have protect and serve us. Historically, our government has poured money into already bloated police bureau budgets without asking many questions. I'm a believer in holding all city bureaus accountable for their budgets and making sure we're, that they were using the resources appropriately. I believe that attempting to mitigate crime through adding police is one of the most expensive, least effective, and least urgent responses the council could have taken. Chief Lavelle confirmed himself that it will take years for any new officers hired by Portland Police Bureau to be able to be deployed, and therefore, again, nice soundbite, but no reality on the street. A recent article in the New York Times and in separate local analysis published by The Mercury showed little correlation between crime and the size of police departments. I believe the police have an important role in our community, but we also have to expand our entire community safety system. I hope police will get back to the basics of solving crimes, investigations, and reducing gun violence. PBB remains out of compliance with the Department of Justice Civil Rights Division because when asked about last summer, Portland Police Bureau's response was, we don't know why people were mad at me that to us. We don't know why people, uh, uh, were upset. If we have a police bureau that even to this day has not acknowledged or apologized for over six thousand documented uses of force, how do we expect the public to trust? What is said? If the DOJ can't get data, the police commissioner can't get data, elected city commissioners can't get data, we're still waiting for the report from August eighth, where four-hundred-plus police officers were on duty at a cost of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in overtime, and we're still waiting for the report why they were directed to not defend East Portland when Proud Boys and other white supremacists terrorized my neighborhood. And that was August eighth. Still waiting for the conclusion of the investigation to me being set up by Portland Police Bureau. Still waiting to find out the outcome of that. We have lots of data we need to inform how we rebuild Portland Police Bureau, and soundbites are not going to get us where we need to go. Separate from any council budget decision related to positions, we have to acknowledge that Portland Police Bureau's had a structural deficit in their budget for a long time. We knew it was coming, and that's the thirty unfunded positions within their budget. We want, we need to make sure that we're investing these one-time resources in ways that make sense when the early stages of developing a truth and reconciliation process between Portlanders and the Portland Police Bureau. I really hope that this produces for us a way for the community and the police to collectively decide how we want to be pleased. There are just a few indisputable truths, so perhaps my colleagues understand why I'm frustrated a bit with this budget. We collectively have to decide what community safety looks like with the community that's been most impacted. There are good things in this package. You may not believe it because of what I've said so far, but there are. The part of this budget I'm most proud of, and I want to be clear, is the Portland Street Response. However, it is not funded by one-time money. It is funded from budget allocations that was voted However, it is not funded by one-time money. It is funded from budget allocations that was voted on over a year ago. It was in a, a policy set aside, and when three of my colleagues in June did not support us taking that money and actually continuing the expansion, that money sit there. So I don't want the public to assume that because we have one-time money, we are continuing to expand an additional first responder, which is Portland Street Response. And I want to thank each of my colleagues for finally coming around and understanding how critical Portland Street Response is to our first responder system. Um, but I want to be clear, that was already, we had money for it, and we will continue to ask for more, but I do not want that to be tied to this one-time money. We already know that we can take at least five percent of Portland Police Bureau's calls, but the thing that most of us don't talk about when we talk about the excessive nine-one-one calls is over forty percent of them are for unwanted people. What if unwanted people calls didn't go to nine-one-one? Well, we'd have sixty percent more capacity to actually deal with real emergencies. And so, one investment we're making, um, is in our, uh, three-one-one response system. That is a good investment. We must reduce the number of calls going into nine-one-one because frankly, we have mistaught the public how to use nine-one-one. I want the community to know that I am grateful for the, uh, for the collaboration between Multlimic County Chair Deborah Cefory, Mayor Wheeler, and Commissioner Ryan. We absolutely must pool our resources in a more efficient and effective manner. And I've been saying since I showed up that we actually, um, should be buying things. I told Mark Jolene at the beginning of COVID, if we don't end things at the end, we have failed miserably. So I am pleased to see us finally investing dollars in long-term solutions rather than temporary shelter beds. This has been a bracket year for gun violence, but it's also been a bracket year in community investments that actually do the upstream work. We still need to determine whether or not the city should have an officer of violence prevention, whether it's better at the county. I hope we have that conversation long before another budget is presented to us. It's vital that the city, um, fund what it funds and funds it well as compared to what we're doing now, which is really unclear to me and many members of the public. I'm also proud of the investment of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars being made into the Gateway Center for Domestic Violence. Um, what we know from COVID is domestic violence has been up at least four hundred percent up and down throughout the entire COVID pandemic. In closing, I am a child of the civil rights movement. I'm committed to the modern civil rights movement that started last summer when George Floyd and Breonna Taylor were murdered. I grew up watching the institution of policing brutalize people that look like me. Then in the summer of twenty twenty, I watched Portland Police brutalize our community as they march for racial justice. I've consoled the devastated families who have lost loved ones to police violence. I've read all the emails saying that they are sick of hearing so many excuses from Portland Police Bureau at a time uh, when all bureaus have seen cuts, whining and complaining that they don't have enough people to do the job they've been hired to do. I've read the emails about how it makes no sense that Portland Police Bureau supposedly had every officer on duty uh, on August eighth, but yet my community was terrorized and they still have no answers. I've been in this battle for thirty years. I will keep my promise to focus on developing systemic community safety that is less reliant on firearms and more reliant on a diversity of how communities identify what safety looks like. When I make decisions, I don't pull numbers out of the air. I actually am data-driven. And in many, many community conversations that I have. And I love most the conversations and spaces where I don't traditionally agree with the people I'm speaking to. Not a big fan of TripAdvisor, Fox News, or Doc Money-funded consultants telling me what I already know. I'm not going to play into the conservative forces trying to lead us back to a status quo through a campaign of fear. The solution to poverty and houselessness isn't criminalization and sweeping people. I'm fighting every day to make sure that the most vulnerable Portlanders, those who are suffering the most before the pandemic, and those whose suffering has been exacerbated by the pandemic. That I know those inequities exist and they're growing, and we are at the forefront of policy decisions. I'm fighting for people. I'm not fighting for appearances or to look pretty. Because I know, and this is what I've learned most through this pandemic, that in hard times, Portlanders will roll up their sleeves and they will show us the best of who they are. We had less people die on our street, not because of government programs, but because of regular Portlanders who just went next door, checked on their elderly neighbors, took food to houseless camps, organized for free community cleanups. That's the Portlanders that I know. That's the Portlanders we will need to tap into as we re-emerge. I want all Portlanders to reemerge economically, not just those with money. That's what I want. Finally, I want to give a special shout out to my Chief of Staff, Colleen Edwards, my Financial Policy Advisor, Kristen Johnson, and my Policy Director, Derek Bradley. For all their work trying to understand this very moving process that happened very quickly with very little input and very little collaboration. My team put everything they could and tried to follow this multimillion-dollar freight chain at its service headed by, and I want to appreciate them greatly. My team and I have been engaging and listening deeply and will continue to do so. And what I know is that once we pass this budget, the next budget process will begin. And I'm asking you, Mayor Wheeler, I've asked you every other budget time, I want to be involved in the beginning, not at the end. And I want my office involved, and I want every office involved, so that when you say this is a collaboration, we can all get behind it being a real collaboration. I vote aye.
Wheeler.
I want to begin by thanking the hundreds of Portlanders who shared their voices over the last several weeks on this fall budget process. In recent weeks, my office and I hosted ten virtual forums, meeting with over five hundred Portlanders, including employers both large and very small, service providers for houseless people, neighborhood leaders, community advocates, houseless individuals, and many, many others. Council had the opportunity to hear from nearly a hundred Portlanders who testified over the course of about four hours during Wednesday's council session. Another five hundred and twenty-one Portlanders provided online testimony. I want to thank you for your time, your heartfelt feedback, and your thoughtful suggestions. Perhaps most importantly, thank you for continuing to show up and speak out for our community. As is to be expected, we heard a variety of perspectives on how to best address issues deeply affecting our city today. We heard your concern for houseless Portlanders in need of resources and shelter, your fear and the reality of being harassed or harmed as you move about the city, your rightful demand for investments in police reform, not just restaffing, your accounts of businesses, sidewalks, and natural areas overcome by trash and graffiti. There are many paths to improvement, but the united sentiment throughout all of these issues was testimonials that focused on the need for meaningful and immediate action. This is an action-oriented budget built to address Portlanders' greatest concerns. Houselessness, community safety, livability, and shared economic prosperity. These are my priority areas as mayor, and they're the key areas that we agreed to prioritize as a council in the spring of this year. Each priority, priority area is clearly reflected in the fall bump proposal that we're voting on today. We have sixty-two million dollars to allocate as part of our fall budget monitoring process, sometimes called the fall bump. These unexpected funds provide us with a crucial opportunity to address our most urgent needs, assist our most vulnerable community members, and stabilize Portland while the upstream investments we made earlier this year and will continue to make in the next fiscal year take shape. Sixty-two million dollars can help make the hope we heard from Portlanders over the last few weeks turn into a reality. As a council, we begin to realize that hope today by committing to do good work with the immediate resources that we have at hand. I hear and echo the need to uphold our city's core value of fiscal responsibility. As a council, we're equally bound to deploy funds and resources in a way that helps meet the urgent needs of Portlanders today. Fiscal responsibility, I believe, is rooted in clarity, in commitment, and in sustainability. The issues we're facing are evident, and Portlanders have been clear in their call for urgent action and improved results. Our houseless community needs resources and access to sanitary and stable shelter. Portlanders in crisis need the right responder to show up and assist them in a reasonable timeframe. And small businesses need to know that sidewalks covered in trash, boarded windows, and vandalism will not be the norm as we strive to support our local economy. This funding package is our opportunity to make an immediate financial commitment to creating greater, sustainable change for the long term. Here's a quick review of what the council is voting on today. Over eighteen million dollars to create a cleaner and more compassionate houselessness response. More than seven million dollars to refocus, reform, and restaff a public safety system that works towards both prevention and intervention. And two point two million dollars to strengthen our shared economic prosperity in a way that moves us towards a carbon-neutral economy. This fall budget process represents the good work that we can do right now with the resources at hand to address our most urgent housing, safety, and economic needs. This budget funds action to help provide more humane and impactful assistance to houseless Portlanders. In partnership with Multlimic County Chair Deborah Cefory and Commissioner Dan Ryan, the city has agreed to invest eighteen point four million dollars into a cleaner and more compassionate response to houselessness. This eleven-part plan invests in every aspect of our houselessness response effort, adding more outreach and cleanup workers, enhancing service coordination amongst agencies, and increasing the availability of transitional shelter spaces. These investments will enable houseless Portlanders to more effectively access resources, receive treatment, and connect with sustainable shelter options. This budget invests in actions to help diversify and expand our public safety response network, like seven million dollars to improve and expand a public safety system that works towards both prevention and intervention. These funds will better equip first responders with the tools, the training, the resources, and the personnel needed to be effective in their roles. Pieces of this funding package invest in a more transparent and accountable Portland Police Bureau. We need to invest in meaningful police reform, like modernizing training, providing body-worn cameras, and improving response times. This funding package also includes robust investments in unarmed response alternatives like the Public Safety Support Specialists and the Portland Street Response. Investments to refocus, reform, and restaff our public safety system can and do support and complement the incredibly valuable role community-based organizations play in our violence reduction efforts. A both-and approach is the heart of comprehensive and sustainable change. This budget invests in actions that help address the income inequality, increased competition, and ever-changing work models challenging our workforce and local businesses. This proposal puts two point two million dollars to support a more equitable and sustainable means of reaching economic prosperity. While smaller in scale than other aspects of this package, these investments will provide an economic roadmap to focus future investments and prepare our city for economic success. In conclusion, Portlanders want meaningful and immediate action on our greatest challenges. This budget works to accomplish just that. I'd like to extend my thanks to my council colleagues, to your staffs, to bureau directors and your staffs, to our incredible city budget office, for the weeks of conversation and collaboration that went into crafting this proposal. Thank you for supporting this fall bump package and investing in our resilient, compassionate, and forward-thinking community. I vote aye. The ordinance is adopted as amended. Thank you, colleagues. And next up, uh, our second item for this afternoon, eight-two-six.
Mayor, that item is scheduled to start at three-thirty.
Oh, you're right. All right, we are in recess for about twenty-nine minutes. We will reconvene at three-thirty.
Item number 826, please Keeler.
Authorize the Director of the Bureau of Environmental Services to increase funding by $1,500,000 and extend the funding period for the Portland Harbor Public Involvement Program to facilitate public involvement.
This is a non-emergency ordinance, Commissioner Maps.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Colleagues, this ordinance comes to us from the Bureau of Environmental Services, which is also charged with managing the Superfund cleanup of the Willamette River. By the time Environmental Services is done removing toxic chemicals from the Willamette, the river which runs through the heart of our city will be cleaner than it has been in generations. That is our future. And now for a little history. In 2019, this council dedicated $300,000 to support grants and other community involvement activities for the remedy design phase of the Superfund cleanup. Due to the success of and demand for community involvement grants, Environmental Services requests council's authorization to allocate all remaining Portland Harbor public involvement grant funds in the 2021-2022 grant cycle. The Bureau makes this request because it is critical that communities, particularly Portland's BIPOC communities, receive the support they need to help shape the cleanup of the Willamette River. The Portland Harbor Community Involvement Program and this ordinance do exactly that. Environmental Services has collaborated with communities to develop a program which will increase public involvement in the cleanup process with a special focus on impacted communities, especially BIPOC communities. The purpose of Portland Harbor community grants is to support meaningful involvement of communities in the Portland Harbor Superfund cleanup process. These grants will do three things. First, they support BIPOC leadership in helping shape the cleanup of the Willamette River. Second, these grants build community capacity to engage in scientific, technical, policy, and process discussions related to the cleanup of the Willamette River. And third, these grants foster collaboration between Portland's communities and the city's Portland Harbor program. Now with that, I would like to hand this presentation over to Portland Harbor program staff. Today, we have Annie Vonberg and Jessica Turlikowski. Annie, Jessica, welcome, and please tell us more.
Great, thank you, Commissioner. Hello, Mayor and Commissioners, my name is Annie Vonberg. I manage the city's Portland Harbor Superfund program. And as all of you know, Portland Harbor Superfund is a federal cleanup site located in the lower 10-mile stretch of the Willamette River. The city is one of over 100 parties responsible for participating and paying for the estimated $2 billion cleanup. EPA oversees this cleanup, which is currently in the remedy design phase. This is where designs are being developed for the cleanup construction. It's an important stage of the process that will ultimately determine how the work gets done. And we're happy to report out that there's a lot of great progress being made throughout that 10-mile stretch currently. We're here today to request an amendment to ordinance number 189696 to increase the funding dedicated to community grants. As Commissioner Maps said, council authorized $300,000 in 2019 to support the grants and other community involvement activities, which has gone to a lot of really great work in elevating community voices in this process. As of this grant cycle, all of those funds have been fully expended, and new authorization is needed to continue this program. Jessica Turlikowski is here with me today. She manages the Portland Harbor Community Involvement Program and will present to you the program, the process, and this year's awardees. You'll also hear from several community members today, this afternoon. We're very appreciative that they're able to join us today. We have some grant reviewers, some community grantees, and also we're happy to have the co-chair of the Portland Utility Board that's able to join with the presentation. So with that, I'll hand it over to Jessica.
Great, thank you all so much. Thank you, Annie. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm very excited to have the opportunity to talk with you all today. If you could advance the next slide, please? So I'm excited to share with you today about how working with the community and listening to community really enables us to to practice the city's core values of anti-racism, equity, transparency, communication, collaboration, and fiscal responsibility. Next slide. And I'd like to start off by just talking a little bit about some of the background related to this program. The city launched the dedicated community involvement program for the Portland Harbor Superfund because of community. We wouldn't have this, we would not have this program without them, and we're so grateful for all that they have done to really make sure that community voices are, particularly those that are disproportionately affected by contamination and the cleanup process, are a part of this effort as we move the cleanup forward. And when we're talking about communities who are disproportionately impacted, we're talking about Black, Indigenous, and people of color. We're talking about both people who are housed and unhoused who live near the site, as well as individuals and communities with current and historical connections to the area, as well as immigrants, refugees, and people who eat resident fish. One of the groups that urged the city to create this program is here today, the Portland Harbor Community Coalition, and you will hear from them a little bit later. But what I want to highlight is that when we worked to develop this program and the priorities for this program, we worked closely with community numbers to do so. We engaged both Portlanders who have been involved in the cleanup for a very long time, as well as communities for whom knowledge of the Superfund site was new. The values and priorities that were articulated by the communities that we worked with resulted in the development of the four programmatic goals that you can see on this side, which really prioritize increasing awareness and understanding of the Portland Harbor cleanup opportunities for public participation, as well as supporting transparency and ongoing communication and collaboration, both with communities who are affected by the Superfund, as well as with public entities. Next slide. And so one of the key components of this program was community grants. And up until this point, those grants have really focused on community, a variety of different community-led efforts, including education with BIPOC youth about the Portland Harbor Superfund site, as well as providing solutions for a more transparent cleanup process. We use a cohort, excuse me, a cohort model to support collaboration and mutual learning opportunities among the grantees. And you can see the list of last cycles' grantees in the supplemental materials included in the ordinance package. Next slide. I'd like to take just a moment to speak a little bit about how community involvement improves our ability to serve the public, not just through the Portland Harbor program, but with other city programs and policies as well. When community members share their knowledge and experiences with us, they help us improve programs and policies. They often spotlight obstacles and burdens that can result from the policies and procedures that we have in place, and they can help us understand what program and system improvements are needed to equitably serve Portland communities. The Portland Harbor Community Involvement Program intentionally creates opportunities to better serve Portlanders by elevating community-articulated perspectives, priorities, and needs with city colleagues and sharing those key learnings from our program. To support such learning and improvements, we asked last year's grantees, as well as current community members, to share their thoughts on what aspects of our program they thought worked well, what was challenging, and what we could do better. And their feedback, along with our programmatic experience, resulted in our revising the approach to this year's funding cycle. Next slide. So our revised approach included prioritizing funding to support BIPOC leadership and participation in the cleanup process as BIPOC communities are disproportionately impacted by environmental contamination. We also made several programmatic and process changes based on the feedback that we received from community members. These changes included revising our application process to be shorter and simpler in paneling community members as grant reviewers and adding a conversational component to the review process so that applicants could share their vision directly with the review panel. We also expanded the range of activities that people could apply for. This decision, too, was the result of community input. Next slide. And so the goal of this program since its inception was to support meaningful community involvement in the cleanup, in the process as that's moving forward. And that continues, that continues forward. To achieve that goal, what we've done is we've requested, we have these three program objectives and asked for community groups to submit applications that spoke to how they would support BIPOC leadership in the cleanup process as that moves forward, how they could contribute to building community capacity so community members could effectively engage in in efforts related to the scientific, the technical, the policy, the process topics related to the cleanup, and then also to support relationship building between community members and the city of Portland. Next slide. And so when we talk about supporting BIPOC communities' involvement in this effort and how we're working to advance the goals and objectives that were outlined on the previous slide, these are the kinds of efforts that we're referring to, what are in these boxes. These boxes indicate the different categories of fundable activities which were directly informed by past grantees, as well as other community members. This year's grants are supporting mutual capacity building, community-led storytelling and reporting related to the harbor, community education, as well as preparing BIPOC youth for environmental cleanup-related employment opportunities or career pathways, and advancing community benefits. Next slide. The Grant Review Committee evaluated applications on several criteria. These included the alignment of the applications with the overall program goal and objectives, demonstrated support of leadership and meaningful involvement of BIPOC communities, and then also creation and promotion of new or existing community relationships and partnerships. After much deliberation, the review panel selected the nine groups listed on this slide to fund. You will hear from one of the Grant Review Committee members about that process and their deliberation shortly. And at this moment, I'm very excited to share that the following groups were selected as this year's grantees, and that grant period runs from September 1st of this year through December 31st of 2022. And so you can see the list of folks up here, and so it's the Black Educational Achievement Movement, Blueprint Foundation, Coalition of Communities of Color, Camp Elso, the Lower Columbia Estuary Partnership, Northeast Coalition of Neighborhoods, People of Color Outdoors, Portland Harbor Community Coalition, and Bear Day. Next slide. And I'm very happy to have the chance to introduce three of this year's awardees to share their perspectives on why the Portland Harbor Community Involvement Program is important and the grants are important to their communities. And I'd like to pass the mic to Ms. Noni Kazi, who heads up the Black Educational Achievement Movement, and then Cassie Cohen, who was with Portland Harbor Community Coalition, will follow her, and then Doron Coles with Blueprint Foundation. Noni, can I pass it to you?
Yeah, thank you so much, Jessica. Good afternoon, council members, Mayor. I put my timer on. Thank you for having us. I'm here not only as the Executive Director of BEAM, which stands for Black Educational Achievement Movement. I've been in business seven years to help our Black students matriculate. As many of us know, that our public school system is failing our Black students miserably. So we are a small nonprofit that works as a collective with other members to provide additional education to our young people to make sure that they have the same opportunities as other folks. And this is, I'm not just here as BEAM, but I'm here because I am a native of Oregon. My family has been here since 1902. We have always lived by the Fremont Bridge, by Williams, under the Coliseum. We've been displaced four times before settling here in Lower Albina. And so this river is very important to me. I've watched my grandfather fish out there, my dad, my uncles, and all my brothers. And it makes me really sad that, it makes me honored that we get to be a part of cleaning it up, but it also makes me sad that it's taken this long. But receiving this grant will allow us, like, the first step in repairing some of this harm that's been done to our community. And as a matter of fact, this is our second round. And so the one thing I always tell the students that I work with is I'm not going to be here in 30 years. I'm not, whether I'm not here in Portland or not here, but they will be here. And they are the ones that need to know this information so they can learn how to sit at the table and stay and fight for their community. Because if we don't do it and educate our kids on how to sit here and talk to the mayor and the council, no one else is going to do it for them. And so although I'm super duper excited, I really hope that this is only the beginning to invest in our community. I think that's my three minutes. So I'm gonna pass it to Cassie.
Thanks, Ms. Noni. Greetings, mayor and commissioners. My name is Cassie Cohen. I was born in the Huapato Valley near the Waterloo or Blue River, now referred to as the Willamette River. I'm the executive director of Portland Harbor Community Coalition. Founded in 2012, PHCC is a collective of groups and individuals elevating the most impacted, both historically and currently, in the billion-dollar federal cleanup of the 10-mile Willamette River Superfund site in what is also known as the Portland Harbor. We at Portland Harbor Community Coalition are very grateful to the Bureau of Environmental Services in the city for this important first step in establishing funding allocated to our coalition and other community groups through the Portland Harbor Grants Program. Our grant primarily focuses on peer-to-peer education within communities that rely on subsistence fishing. An important element of our grant will include working with coalition partners, Living Islands, a nonprofit focused on serving the Pacific Islander community in the region, and Get Hooked Foundation, focused, established to introduce youth and families of color to the joy of outdoors and fishing. So we will co-create cultural and language-specific Portland Harbor outreach materials in a video as well to increase awareness around subsistence fishing and the impacts of the Superfund site on the communities and, you know, and also on the environment. Pacific Islanders and other fishers face barriers, including language and access to information about existing regulations and impacts of decades of industrial contamination on fish and the cumulative health impacts on people. This has led to many newcomers and other fisher communities becoming enmeshed in the criminal justice system due to inadequate communication despite practicing their traditions and ways of life. Mr. O.B. Hill, Vanport survivor and community historian, sums up the intergenerational severing of safe, healthy fishing access in the harbor when he says he'd rather be, quote, "fishing" instead of wishing, unquote. What should healing look like for communities impacted by Portland Harbor? The city has prioritized fully funding grant requests from a small number of organizations over funding what could be a larger number of organizations at a slightly lower level. So we appreciate the city's commitment to expanding funding in order to meet the needs of existing grantees, and we also feel it is critical for the program to include funding for additional groups that are committed to doing Portland Harbor work in the long run that have historically been doing that work as well and who, you know, may not work exclusively with BIPOC folks, but are working with people that live right there along the river. So they are impacted. Grants will provide some community benefits, but there also must be more. So PHCC members hope to also see an increase of city transparency and accountability with Portland Harbor community groups putting values into action when it comes to designing a river cleanup to community standards, which are often higher than the minimum standards required. Our members ask the city to listen to community experts who say that the billion-dollar cleanup, restoration, and redevelopment in and around the river will only be carried out equitably once the city commits to co-creating, excuse me, hey. Rola, rola, rola. Quiet, quiet, quiet. Sorry. Okay, so the city, once the city commits to co-creating and championing community benefits tools, including community benefits agreements proven to generate positive outcomes for impacted communities. Examples of community benefits priorities to be included in these tools include high standards for diverse workforce and contracting, protection of community health, robust environmental measures, community oversight, and increased river access for recreation and cultural use. We look forward to continuing dialogue with city leadership and staff to get us to these broader community benefits, and again, we are grateful, so thank you.
Thank you, Cassie. Commissioner Hardisty had a comment or question?
Thank you, mayor. Thank you so much for the presentation, Jessica. Cassie, I've known you've been involved in this work for a very, very long time. And what I know is that the coalition has not been, well, let me just say, less than successful in getting policymakers and decision-makers to really pay attention to what happens during the cleanup, who benefits during the cleanup, who gets those jobs? What do we build after the cleanup? And how do we make sure that lower-income people, once again, aren't displaced and not a part of the entire process? So grants sound fine, but that's that's to decide how the cleanup happens. I am concerned that we're investing every dollar we have in community engagement and actually the how question, and we've got other questions that absolutely must be answered. So where do these funds come from? And I'm concerned if we give you authority to spend 1.5 million, at the end, how is the community going to make sure that the community's voice is actually what's driving decision-making, rather than those with resources driving the decision-making?
Great question, Commissioner Hardisty. End points. I don't know if I'm allowed to respond or who.
Oh, please, I was asking you. So if you have an answer, please. And I'm asking you because I know you, and I know the grassroots community work that the Portland Harbor Community Coalition has been involved in for years, studying with absolutely no money. And so I just, because I know you, I want you to answer that question.
Really appreciate it. Yeah, you know, we, that needs to be coming from the ground up, you know, the solutions around how to do an equitable cleanup. And those solutions are there, and it's not for lack of trying. So we, you know, we need to get on that conversation in a very, you know, fast-paced way. We have one year, one year to get it right around community benefits and the specific tools and mechanisms to make that happen. There's been, you know, lots of, you know, barriers presented or concerns presented by city leadership from the attorney's office and others. And it's just, you know, so we're going to be having simultaneous conversations, one with grants, one with community benefits agreement, and eventually it'll lead to negotiations, we hope, with the city. And, you know, we're also in conversations with the other public agencies as well that are liable for cleanup. So there's still a lot of unknowns, but that doesn't mean that we can't make meaningful progress and that, you know, the city should be stepping up as a champion, you know, to make a commitment, like, as soon as possible around what, you know, what that agreement would look like, you know, with community leaders. We have, you know, we have the outline, we have the template, we're ready to get to work with the city, so, yeah.
Thank you, Cassie. And Jessica, I guess this is more of a question for you. What are the outcomes that you hope to achieve if, in fact, this is approved by council?
Yeah, thank you for your question, Commissioner Hardisty. I think there's a few things. One is that community will see some of their input and feedback resulting or reflected back in the design and some of the ways that they are offering to contribute their time and efforts. And so I think that's one of the big pieces, and also to have folks to be informed and engaged and be able to actively contribute and spend more time engaging in the conversations related to the design, which is the current phase that we're in.
And are we prioritizing low-income communities that are surrounding the area? What is, who did we send a grant application out to?
Yeah, so the grant applications went out far and wide. We leverage both the communications networks that we have through the connections and the relationships with the communities that we have, and then also ones that we've built up within our respective program, as well as connecting with our colleagues who run other grant programs across the city, as well as some foundational grant funders as well.
Thank you for that. I guess my concern is it doesn't seem to be a, doesn't seem to be a process whereby all that public engagement is actually going to be fed into policymakers who need to have the info so that they can, we can make the right policy decisions as we move forward. So how does, and again, I understand we're prioritizing BIPOC voices, and that is always a good thing, but I'm confused about, there's a lot of constituents around this cleanup. Some have more responsibility than others, but some are low-income community members or will be hugely impacted by whatever we do. And so, A, I want informed voices, but I want the people most impacted to actually have a voice in this process. And is there, so again, I'm not, I'm not sure who you're outreaching to, how connected they are to the work that's happening and the decisions that will have to be made. So that's my big concern. I have two big concerns. One is how does all that feedback get into anything formal that the council gets to weigh in on? A, and B, if you spend all the money now, what happens next?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. On the policy question, I would like to pass that off to Annie to answer, if you don't mind.
Yes, thank you so much, Commissioner Hardisty, and I absolutely understand that concern. And I think that's a part of what we're trying to address exactly. So as I mentioned, the Environmental Protection Agency is the federal agency that is in charge of establishing the infrastructure and the process itself for both the design and the actual implementation. Now, they have co-created with community members, and then some of those here today, including Cassie Cohen, a process called Community Collaborative, and that is the process to have voices at a table that can kind of engage and plug in multiple layers and kind of points of this broader process. We also see a deficit in there that it's hard for communities to get involved and for them to have an official voice in the policy and decision-making process. We believe that these funds really help prop up that in building capacity, building partnerships, a coordinated effort in helping elevate those voices to participate in that process. So we are somewhat limited in controlling in terms of, because there are so many parties involved, and we are not the regulator that makes the decisions. But we believe we, as representative of Portlanders, can help build that capacity and build the space to elevate them into that process. But I absolutely hear your concern, and I think that's one of our attempts to try to address it.
And I would like to add, I mean, one of the things that, you know, just in terms of work that we've done thus far in terms of co-creating workshops and community involvement opportunities with organizations like PHCC, with the Portland Harbor Community Advisory Group, and Portland Audubon, and Willamette Riverkeeper, and a number of other groups, and including BEAM and Blueprint, who are also being funded again this year. We've worked together to engage communities to ensure that their voices are a part of this. One is to help them understand what types of efforts are underway and to also figure out where they can plug in. And I think that piece is really, is really an important one and is something that we can't do without having the connections and the relationships with the community groups that we're working with.
Thank you, Commissioner Hardisty. Are there any other additional questions anybody has at this point? Commissioner, does that complete the presentation? Sorry, Cassie, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I know Darren Coles was hoping to share his piece if there's still time.
Sure, of course. Hey, Darren.
Hey. Hi there. It's Doron, actually. That's okay, my name.
Sorry about that.
Black name. No worries, no worries. So hello, everyone. Thanks for giving me this opportunity to speak. I'm the executive director of the Blueprint Foundation, and I'm excited that the city is committed to this and other community engagement programs that go beyond general public awareness campaigns to include activities that are culturally meaningful. I feel it's an essential step to building the multicultural coalition we need to tackle local environmental justice challenges, like the Superfund site, and global challenges like climate change. We need people from the most vulnerable communities to not only become knowledgeable about the environment and environmental degradation and pollution, but to also develop a visceral connection to nature, connections that lead to increases in nature-based activities, informed advocacy, and lifelong stewardship, including stewardship that is performed through careers in the green sector. I'm excited to help my community members hardwire into their limbic region of their brain that the environment is an extension of themselves, as much a part of their well-being as eating or breathing or meditating, because it is. And this isn't a new notion. It's not new for my community. Rather, it's a reclamation of our ancestral history of reciprocity, of being one with the earth rather than an owner of it. Reconnecting our people to the environment requires physically engaging in activities that build neural associations with green spaces, cultural responsive education about what they're seeing and experiencing, and empowerment to take an active role in intersectional environmentalism. Once we have these connections made in our brains, we'll forever have the urge to advocate for and steward the environment, just as we advocate for and protect ourselves. But it starts with for-us, by-us programs, like those supported by this funding. So thanks for listening, and thanks for considering further investment. And that is all I'll say, so I'll pass it back to you, Jessica.
Awesome. Oh, I'm sorry, mayor, did you have a question?
No, no, just, does that complete the presentation?
We have a couple of other voices that we wanted to.
What I'm gonna do is not interrupt. I'm gonna stop. And if you could just ping me when we're at the end of the presentation, thanks.
So I did want to take a moment, just to, as we're passing this along, and thank you, Cassie, and Noni, and Doron for your comments. And before I pass the mic to Lenny Brown, Lenny, who's gonna share her experience on behalf of the community review panelists as part of this process, I just want to acknowledge all of the time and effort and energy that these community members put in to really be thoughtful about what the, about the criteria, about advancing the cleanup, and really centering equity, and really being thoughtful about how we move this cleanup forward in an equitable way. So Lenny, I'll pass it to you.
Great, thanks, Jessica, and good afternoon, all. I'm Lenny Brown. I'm a North Portland community member, and I got to sit on the Grant Review Panel alongside three other community members. Lorraine, I see that you're here. Hello. And then also some city staff as well. I know there's a lot of testimony today, but I'm really glad that the grantees were able to share from their perspectives, too, because being on the review panel, that's what really moved us, was we got to hear from applicants their stories and the work that they were trying to advance through interviews. So it was a really personal experience. And from those conversations with community applicants, we heard really powerful personal stories of lived experience, sometimes over generations. stories of lived experience, sometimes over generations, like Noni kind of referenced earlier today. They were creative, community-led, and community-centered programming that involved frontline communities in the Portland Harbor cleanup. And many of the BIPOC-led CBOs, in particular, the community-based organizations, were in relationship with one another. They had strong partnerships with each other. They emphasized coalition building, and they were already working together in other areas and in the Portland Harbor cleanup work as well. We also learned that applicants often requested lower funding amounts than they actually needed. And oftentimes, the work was completed through volunteer time or putting in extra hours. And, you know, after hearing all of these stories, we saw that applicants were proposing really meaningful, creative, and important programming related to Superfund cleanup, and specifically bringing in new voices into this process, especially Black, Indigenous, and communities of color, as well as other frontline community members. And during our deliberation with the review panel, it became evident that we were asking community groups, especially those led by leaders of color and doing environmental justice work, we were asking them once again to make do with insufficient resources. BIPOC-led community groups are inadequately funded, and too many people are volunteering their time because they care, because they have to care, because the cleanup and the Portland Harbor Superfund directly impacts their lives. These community groups are doing impressive work, and we need to fund them appropriately. So inviting us community members to be part of the grant review process is a step in the right direction. However, grant making is still inequitable if we ask us community members to divide up an amount that is insufficient in meeting the needs of our BIPOC communities doing Superfund cleanup work. We do not want to be complicit in a system that is inequitable for BIPOC communities. And therefore, we cannot divide up that money while also trying to uplift racial justice and anti-racism. So on behalf of the review panel today, we're here to help the city stand by its commitment to anti-racism. If the city is committed to racial justice, repairing past harm, and funding communities of color to lead environmental justice work, as they say they are, we need to put more money into this grant, not only for this year, but for years to come. So our panel recommends and requests that council amend the existing ordinance and authorize at least $500,000 per year over the next three years. And we're also requesting the creation of more venues for grantees and frontline communities to share their experiences, speak directly to city council, influence policy, and build more equitable systems within the city. We shared some more feedback to the Public Utility Board, and the board does support our request. And so I would like to pass the virtual mic to Karen Williams, and that will conclude the testimony. Thank you for your time.
Hello, thank you, Cassie. Mayor Wheeler, Commissioner Lenny, pardon me, thank you, Lenny, and thank you, Cassie. Mayor Wheeler, Commissioner Maps, and Commissioners, my name is Karen Williams, and I testify today as co-chair on behalf of the Portland Utility Board. Pub enthusiastically endorses Ordinance 189696 to increase funding for the Portland Harbor Public Involvement Program. Pub members were impressed and moved by the experience that the community members of the Portland Harbor Grant Committee, including Lenny, shared with us at our September meeting. It was clear to us at that time that the value of the community engagement work that these grants support far exceeded the funds budgeted. Pub believes that the restoration of the harbor ecosystem is impossible without the deep involvement of the communities that are most geographically, culturally, emotionally, and spiritually connected to the river, those communities who are also facing racial and economic inequities in our city. Pub recommends that city council increase the funding for the Portland Harbor Grant Program by $1.5 million to demonstrate how valuable community member expertise and lived experience are to Portland Harbor restoration. Thank you for accepting Pub's testimony.
Thank you so much, Karen. If we could go to the next slide, and I can just wrap up with exactly what we're seeking within the ordinance, that would be fantastic. Thank you. So the panel's conclusions is really what led us to our ordinance amendment request today. As of this grant cycle, all of the funds have been fully expended. And the funding request actually does align with both the trajectory of the growth of the program and the conversations with grantees' anticipated needs for future funding. And so the Bureau of Environmental Services requests council approve the ordinance amendment to direct the Bureau of Environmental Services or the directors designate to authorize the increased funding for the Portland Harbor Public Involvement Program, up to $1.5 million for community grants and the administration of those grants to support meaningful participation through the remedy design phase, which is expected to go through the fiscal year 2425. And authorization of those funds would enable the program to continue to conduct its annual application and review process, giving organizations an opportunity to submit their community-led project proposals for grant funding through fiscal year 2425. And those funds would support Portlanders, particularly those disproportionately affected by the by the Superfund site and the cleanup to be involved. And that is all. That concludes our presentation, and we thank you for your time and your consideration today.
All right, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Commissioner Hardisty?
Thank you. Thank you very much for that presentation. Where did the original fund come from?
I'll take that one, Jessica. So the original allotted funds are $300,000, and that comes from the Citywide Obligation Fund that has been established to collect funds from five different fund areas. That includes VES, PBO, the General Fund, Prosper Portland, and the Water Bureau.
And so the fund, is this an ongoing fund, was the money would just set aside for this particular activity?
That fund has been established to do all of the city of Portland's work related to the remedy design phase of the project. So we also have other projects that we participate, including Willamette Cove, River Mile 11, in an information management plan that we're working on with the State of Oregon and EPA to help make information regarding the cleanup more transparent for everyone to track progress.
And when the 1.5 million is expended, the fund is expended?
That's correct. So what we're seeking here is that limited authorization of 1.5 million. All of those same five funds would contribute to the Citywide Obligation Fund. They would do that if approved, starting next fiscal year, and then continued for two additional fiscal years for a total of three years.
And what are the outcomes we hope to get from, up in it from 300,000 to 500,000 per year? And why should the council not just get a report back every year like we do normal budget processes to determine if we're gonna continue to invest because we're getting a return on our investment?
I'll hand that over to Jessica to go over those specific outcomes that we have established. Jessica, do you want to take that? And I will, before you go, I will say, the reason why we're using this opportunity to bring this decision to you today is because of the timing. We just concluded this grant process, and we have these awardees. We're also approaching the budget process, where we're preparing for budgets for next year. What we've heard strongly, both from the community panel and from the community organizations, is this isn't enough money. So this is in response to that request of how do we meet, not only hear that feedback from these community groups, but also act on it. So this is part of us acting on that for your consideration. We also include specific report outs from these individual grants, so we understand what we're getting for that investment and if this is working. And so we would be happy to provide that to council members as well. But Jessica, if you want to go over those very specific outcomes that we have established for these funds?
Yeah, that would have been really helpful to actually know what outcomes we've already received from the funds we've expended, how we've expanded it, and who is missing, and so who else did we bring in? All that information would have been really helpful.
There's some supplemental information in your packet today that will show previous winners, the amount that they were allotted, but we would be more than happy to circle back with you and your staff with more detailed information.
That's exactly what I was referring to. I've read everything that was included, but nothing that you said today is included in my packet, so I was a bit confused about the ask as compared to what was in my packet. Thank you.
Very good. Colleagues, any further questions? Kealan, do we have public testimony on this subject? Oh, Commissioner Maps, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, Jessica, did you want, did you have something to add to Commissioner Hardisty's comment about specific outcomes?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to make sure to respond to that. I think there's a couple of things, both speaking to what investment has gotten us thus far. I think, you know, there's a few different things. One is we have had community voices be in part, be part of and inform our, the remedy design work that is happening at Willamette Cove, and that's a project that we're partnering with both the state and the Port of Portland on. And having community voices be a part of that has helped inform what the basis of design is in that area, which we're very excited about. We're also really excited to have community voices been included in that project that Annie had mentioned, the Information Management Plan, this effort where we're working to make sure that cleanup information and the ability to track the progress of the cleanup is going to be in one place. And so the funds last year were hyper-focused and actually supported community involvement, both within the Willamette Cove context and within the Information Management Plan context. And both of those efforts resulted in, in community feedback being the Information Management Plan effort, community feedback, being integrated into documents that are going to the Environmental Protection Agency, and informing how information could be made public and available, and supporting that transparency piece.
So are you looking for consensus among community-based organizations, or is just a hush pash of dreams and aspirations?
I guess, I mean, with regards to the question related to how information is being provided, we had received, and the feedback that we received was concrete and useful, and provided opportunities for both our technical team to understand more about community priorities, and for us to really be thoughtful about how information related to something really complicated, complex, and long-term could be made available publicly for the duration for monitoring that cleanup as well. And so I think community is, 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 is their voices enable us to do that work and to identify those needs. The other piece that I do want to respond to, as well as sort of thinking about the outcomes for this cycle, and I think also thinking about, you know, deepening and deepening and sort of broadening the bench of community members who are engaged in this effort is really important. It's a long-time effort. It's been going on for a long time, as you all well know, and the cleanup is anticipated to go on for much longer. And I think what is particularly exciting about this cohort of grantees is that there's actually a lot of effort and attention and intentionality dedicated to bringing in young people as well, for them to understand this effort and to have a seat at the table as the cleanup moves forward.
You know, I'm also excited about the potential for partnerships with the Portland Clean Energy Fund. When we talk about the cleanup itself, and the opportunity to be innovative and to think about climate resiliency along the way, I guess, again, my concern is just how do we connect the dots in a way that we're not wasting people's time? We have so many community volunteers, and so many advisory committees providing so much advice, and most of the time it's one-way communication. And so I'm just concerned that we're, once again, setting the community up for failure. And yeah, I just want to make sure we've got a plan, we've got intentionality, and that we are centering the folks most impacted by it. And so I look forward to meeting with you before we vote on this and getting some additional information. Thank you. And I see Lorraine has put her hand up, Mayor. She may have something she wanted to add.
Please, go ahead, Lauren.
So as a community outreach practitioner, the practitioner and stuff, I just want to say, as a member of the review committee, when we want, when we want community involved, we have to first provide communities who have not been given the opportunity, who have been excluded, who have been intimidated by city government in many forms. They have been harmed, that we cannot just turn around and say, oh, we want your input. Okay, we have to provide them with the funding and the resources for them to learn the system so that they know how to work the system. And I think that is important, that we take that into consideration when we are funding community groups who have not had that natural engagement, or have not had that the air of the politician or the city government, that we provide them with the, with the resources that they need to get that. So in some instances, we'll see that that is what is happening. And when we talk about outcomes, we need to be clear about what it is, what outcomes look like. So for instance, providing the resources to a community, the communities who have not been engaged is, an outcome is that they understand how to come to council, how to advocate, how to ask, how to push, how to demand, in a way that results, that gets results. So I just wanted to share that with you, and also to reiterate the fact that we need to stop asking community to rely so much on their volunteerism because they have no choice. We are asking the communities who are most disadvantaged to give the most. And in other cases, where we are quite comfortable funding those communities who have always gotten what they needed to do, what they need to do. I just wanted to share that. When we're talking about outcomes, we need to be clear to understand what it is we're saying, if we are going to be centering outcomes in that white perspective and that majority perspective, or are we going to be centering outcomes based on the community's needs and what they have not been afforded in the past? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we might be at the point of calling for public testimony or additional public testimony. Staff, is that right?
Kealan, do we have anybody signed up?
No one signed up for this item.
All right, very good. So I guess at this point, I'll ask, this is a non-emergency ordinance, so we're gonna just move it to second reading, but is there anything else anybody'd like to add for the good of the order?
I just want to, I just want to thank, or Lorraine, please go.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the staff who has staffed our review committee, Jessica, Annie, and also to thank Commissioner Maps' office for the support that they gave us, that when we came to you all and say, this is not enough money, it wasn't like, oh, hold up, wait a minute, he's like, okay, let's see what we can do. So I just want to appreciate that, and I hope that this process is not a one-off process, and that the city takes these examples and use it in other spaces so that you can get to some outcomes that we're looking for. I just wanted to thank Commissioner Map and his staff, and we really appreciate all, how you all supported us in this process.
Yeah, and I'd like to add my thanks as well. I thought this was a fantastic presentation. I appreciate, Commissioner Hardisty, the questions you asked. I think that elicited some really useful testimony. I want to thank all of you who took the time this afternoon. I know it's been a long day, and I really appreciate your being here. Commissioner Maps, I want to thank you and your team. You've also had a long day, and city staff. I will be very happy to work on this going forward, and I appreciate the first reading today. So, well done. This is a first reading of a non-emergency ordinance. It moves to second reading. And Kealan, I believe that finishes our business for the day, does it?
It does, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Kealan, also, and your team. You guys did a great job of keeping us focused and on track today. With that, colleagues, we are adjourned. Thank you all. With that, colleagues, we are adjourned. Thank you all.